Jim, can you hear us?
Yup.
Okay, there we go.
There we go.
Thanks, Kristi.
Yeah. That's right. Just unplug and put it back in. Thanks, Kristi. I'm actually gonna start over then. Welcome to the Commissioners' Work Session on Monday, March 31st, 2025. I'm Commissioner Sharon Bollos. I have Commissioner Gage Farrar with me. We have Commissioner Jim Harvey online. Item one on our agenda is discussion and/or action for approval of the minutes for the Commissioned Work Session held on March 24th, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item two, discussion regarding UTA Board Position, Beth Holbrook, Jenna Ossler. We also have Liam Keel here and Jessica Clark. Beth, your name's listed first. Would you like Jenna to start?
I would ask that Jenna go ahead and start with this process. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'm Jenna Ossler, Director of Board Governance at UTA. And just to give kind of a quick introduction of why I'm here. I, for UTA, kind of on behalf of the Governor's Office, I'm helping to facilitate the nomination of the expiring trustee position that we have at UTA. As you know, Beth currently fills that seat, and it's for the northern area of our Transit District. So, the process basically is that several five different bodies need to nominate one person to the Governor for the Governor then to appoint the trustee for the coming four years. So, Weaver County Commission, Weaver County Cog, Davis Commission, Davis Cog, and Box Elder County Commission are the five bodies that will nominate a person to the Governor for this position. So, I am just helping to make sure that that happens and helping to collect those nominations to submit to the Governor, which are due to him by June 1st. So, I don't know if you have any questions about the position or about the process in general. I'm happy to answer whatever questions you might have.
Questions?
So, yeah, a couple. So, I know a lot of the boards that Governor puts, he has a two-year, or excuse me, two-term limitation. Is there a limitation on this?
There is no limitation on this board.
Okay. And how many people do we, do we have? Just one person we nominate?
Just one.
Just one, okay.
Yep.
All right.
And it's a three-member board, as you may know.
Yeah, familiar with that.
But just one person from the northern.
Did you say June 1?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Now, I tell my questions, manager.
Any questions, Commissioner Harvey?
None for me, Madam Chair. Thank you. I will make the comment that Beth's done a wonderful job for us and appreciate her service. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, I don't think we have any other questions then. This nomination, I assume, will go on our Commission Agenda.
It'll be out there for tomorrow.
I think it's on there, isn't it?
It is. Okay. Perfect.
Yeah, so I will see you tomorrow.
Okay. Awesome. Will you be here tomorrow?
Hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, good. Thank you very much. No, just for the record, Beth Holbrook, Trustee Utah Transit Authority, the Representatives Davis, Weaver, and Box Elder. And nothing to add except thank you for the opportunity to have this discussion. I think it's really valuable. And tomorrow I'll have a little more, just some background of some of the other elements that have been accomplished since this originated back in 2018.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks so much.
Good to see you.
Good to see you too.
Coming up.
Nice to meet you.
All right, we'll change out the room. I assume we have people out there waiting for us.
I don't know what all this snickering's about.
Can I sit across from us?
I can.
She's used to sitting right next to you.
Yeah, you're used to being over here.
I know. Get on my spot.
Yeah, we'll save it for you.
All right. Item three on our agenda is discussion regarding business recruitment, expansion, and development policy. Stephanie Russell and Ashlyn Tuckett. Is Lauren coming?
No, she's out of conference today.
Awesome, okay. Happy to have both of you.
Well, thank you, Commissioners. This should be pretty quick. Laura and I have been working on a policy. Gage, as you know, and Sharon, and I know how keyed in with you are about what's going on with the state, but there's been a lot of confusion on the state level as it relates to business recruitment, expansion, and development between certain organizations, specifically EDC Utah and GOEO. And that's kind of funneled down into our West Weaver corridor. It's become somewhat of a problem. And so I've been working with GOEO and UEA and EDC Utah and Inland Port and Lauren to come up with an actual policy for the county to adopt. So, I'm just gonna kind of go through this with you. It's a very short and simple policy. But it really is, it enforces our commitment to fostering economic growth by attracting and expanding and supporting businesses within the unincorporated area. And that's always been our goal, but we need to have a little more structure and strategy as it relates to that. So, through strategic partnership and structured approach, the county streamlining business recruitment, expansion, and development. So, this policy establishes a framework for business engagement, site development, and financial incentives. So, I'll go through these steps. It outlines how we'd like to see the business recruitment, retention, and expansion happen in the county and how we would partner with very specific groups to make that happen. So, the first step is Weaver County Business Recruitment and Expansion. And that first step in that is, the first step is marketing and property inventory. And so this gives some guidance as to who would be involved in that process. So, Weaver County Economic Development, Northern Utah Economic Alliance, the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, and the Economic Development Corporation of EDC Utah. These are all individuals, individual organizations that we have contracts with and that we have either contracts or memberships or agreements with. So, they would, those organizations would work together to actively market available properties within the unincorporated Weaver County area. And it also includes maintaining a detailed property inventory. So, currently, we have a contract with NUEA to maintain our property inventory. So, they're gonna be the ones that maintain that inventory out in the unincorporated areas. And that would highlight suitable sites for industrial and commercial development in the county. Then, as it relates to RFI responses, Weaver County Economic Development, NUEA, GOEO, and EDC Utah will collaborate to provide timely and comprehensive responses to requests for information. So, currently, if a request for information comes through, we usually have NUEA respond to those. So, they're gonna continue to respond to those requests for information on our behalf. That's the, that's the, that's part of the contract that we have with them, Gage. So, we want to make sure what's been happening is, those have been going all over the place. They've been going into the Inland Port, they've been going just through EDC Utah.
Their requests themselves.
Their requests, and they need to come through NUEA and the county first.
So, the way this is stated then, if someone reached out to Inland Port, they would send them to NUEA?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, everything needs to be funneled into NUEA. And then Allison, Ashlyn is partnering with Chris and Alex to respond to those RFIs.
Okay.
So, and same thing with the inventory. So, anything that's inventoried needs to go through NUEA, and then they'll partner with Ashlyn and to get those responses back to the, back to the site selectors. So, what we've been seeing is just these site selectors being brought in by other organizations into our area. They are not taking into consideration our Western Weaver General Plan. They're not taking into consideration our relationship with NUEA and our agreement with NUEA, and they're just bypassing the county and NUEA at this point. So, we need to make sure they have an understanding. This is the county's unincorporated area. It is not the state. And this is an opportunity for us to have collaborative partnerships where we already have existing organizations in place, like the Inland Port and like NUEA, that can help facilitate those requests for information and can also schedule those site visits and make sure that anyone that's coming into our area is in adherence to our zoning, in adherence to what needs we have as it relates to infrastructure and in compliance with our Western Weaver General Plan.
Okay.
So, this is part of this first step. The last, number three is site selection developer introductions. This is to be done through NUEA in collaboration with my department. They will coordinate the site selective meetings with key stakeholders, including Weaver County Economic Development, the Utah Inland Port, Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, and EDC Utah. So, that all goes through Chris's organization for those site selector visits to be scheduled. And that way, that gives us an opportunity that we're not just having people drop in at the county or what's also been happening, going out into that area and in the Inland Port area and doing site selector visits without the county or NUEA completely aware that they're happening. So, these meetings facilitate connections between businesses, developers, landowners, and stakeholders to evaluate project feasibility. That's really important, to evaluate that project feasibility. We have all of that information in-house. And introduce prospective projects to the Western Weaver General Plan. That's another thing too, that just needs to be moved up the chain. They need to have an understanding. If you want to come out and develop, you need to understand what we're doing out there and what's allowed and what our plan looks like. Fourth is property owner connections and meetings. This is through with Weber County and NUEA. They'll coordinate all direct meetings between site selectors, property brokers, and property owners. These discussions help streamline negotiations and address site-specific questions. So, one of the things we've been having happen is that they'll go out and do these site visits and make all of these promises, and we do not have the infrastructure to support those or provide misinformation about the infrastructure. And it's causing a lot of conflict, and it basically makes the county look inept.
Yeah.
And it needs to stop. Business expansion, Weaver County Economic Development Partners with GOEO. This is a very specific one. As it relates to existing businesses, Weaver County and GOEO are the only two entities that would be able to provide incentives for existing businesses. So, that just relates to any existing businesses that want to participate in our incentive process or GOEO's incentive process. We would coordinate that meeting. Any questions on step one?
You guys like it?
Yeah, I do like it.
Okay.
One question. And it probably pertains somewhere else, but I just noticed in item three, Western Weaver General Plan. I know that once the incorporation takes place in the upper valley, that we won't have much left, but we will still have some.
Do you want me to add that in?
So, I just want to make sure that the same applies. You know, I know there's so much interest in the Western County.
Great point.
But I want to make sure that even, you know, with the remaining land that's unincorporated in the upper valley.
I'll change that.
That's addresses that, so that if and when interested parties start, you know, looking around up there, that the same things apply.
Yeah, and I did mention that unincorporated earlier.
Yeah, it's unincorporated.
Yeah, I'll go and change that last sentence.
Purpose, I think, yeah, and the purpose.
So, yeah, no, I love that. Great.
Anyway, just, right now, it's not lighting up, but, you know.
No, no.
Depending on what happens in the future.
If we want to make a policy, let's make sure it's all-inclusive.
Okay.
So, I will definitely change that. Introduce prospective projects to unincorporated Weaver County.
Yeah.
Sound good, Gage?
Okay.
Um, okay, so that lays out the business recruitment and expansion piece. And like I said, I've showed this to GOEO, EDC Utah, and NUEA. Everyone's got buy-in on it, and Inland Port as well. Weaver County Business Development. So, this, after they do the site selection and the recruitment and all of that, that's when we need, we need these organizations to pass the baton over to Sean and I. And Sean and I have met, and we've spoken with the organizations about this also. And so, site development process. So, once the client decides, okay, this, we like this, we want to move forward with developing on the land, then that's when these organizations, these marketing organizations step away and let Weaver County do its thing. And that would be working with Sean and I to schedule meetings with the Weaver County Development Team to discuss project zoning, infrastructure development codes, and permitting processes. And then the same would go for infrastructure and utilities as it relates to that area. They would work with my department, and we would get them in touch with the different departments and the different districts that they need to get their permitting and their agreements through. And then flip over on the back, the last part of that is Weaver County Commissioners and Planning Commission. Weaver County Economic and Community Development Directors will schedule project introduction meetings with you guys and with the Planning Commission, so that you're not getting bombarded with a bunch of meetings where we have not gone and done our due diligence.
Yeah.
So, just to save everybody's time. And this has a lot to do with saving the time of the Planning Department as well, because they are understaffed. And we keep getting a lot of these requests to meet with them way before they, we've got, we need to do other things before we start bringing all the staff in and wasting their time. All right, any questions on step two?
Mr. Harvey, you can chime in anytime.
She's done a good job explaining it, and I think we've got a little background, so it's pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Step three, this is county and state public finance tools and incentives. As it relates to public infrastructure districts being created in the county, that would fall under my department. Community reinvestment agencies and tax increment finance, that would also fall under my department. Utah Inland Port Authority Tax Differential, that actually has to go through the Utah Inland Port. But if you, if you look through here, there's an understanding that you have to go through the Economic Development Finance Committee for all of, for these three. And then the last one is that EDTF, and that goes through the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity. And those are the four different types of incentives that the county offers, are just those four. The two that the county offers will go through our Economic Development Finance Committee. The other two go through those different boards on the state level. So, that just outlines right up front with the developers. So, there's no question as to what incentives would be a potential for a developer to come in and do and what organization they would need to work with to get as incentives. So, I'm hoping to clarify that a little bit better. And then last is just the contact list for everyone that's listed. And then Lauren drafted a resolution, which I can make this adjustment that you had, your suggestion. And then we have a resolution that we'd just like to adopt this as a policy for economic development, for business recruitment and expansion. Questions?
No, this, you know, this was needed. So, here's, here's the issue I think everybody's aware of is the Governor, bless his heart, is, we've got too many people out there, too many salesmen selling stuff they don't know anything about.
Exactly.
Between GOEO, EDC Utah, and basically when the Governor took EDC Utah and took 80% of their revenue away, they're looking for a reason to exist. So, again, I can't blame, blame them for, you know, they need to have a reason to exist. Whether the resolution will do any good or not, I mean, this all comes from the state.
Yeah.
We don't, we can't, I can't call the Governor and say, "Call your GOEO people back," because that's what they're paid to do.
Absolutely.
But I think we need to make it clear and send them a copy of it, whatever. I actually had some discussions at the WRC meeting last
Oh, okay.
with GOEO Governor's Director. And said, "Look, you know, you guys have got to coordinate with the counties." Now, whether you're doing that with all counties, I said, "I'm concerned about Weaver County."
Exactly, me too.
But if you're, if this is happening in Weaver, maybe happening in other places. You, you know, you're trying to sell something that you don't have any information on.
Right.
Where do you get the information to give? Because all we're doing is, these site selectors are coming in, and they're being told either bad information, misinformation, and then they go to another state. So, I explained to her, "Sit down with the Governor. If I talk to him, I'll explain it." He's hurting himself by doing this.
Yeah.
So, I think this is a good policy, hopefully, to help us out. But at the end of the day, you know, it's out of our control.
Absolutely. And, you know, part of this was trying to get out in front of House Bill 239.
Right.
And House Bill 337, which is exactly what you're saying, Gage. We honestly don't have control, but at least we can say, "Hey, we want to be a good partner, and this is how you can partner with us effectively." We've already done our visioning. We've already done our strategic planning. We have a plan in place. We have the Inland Port in place. We have the relationships with the property owners. We have the knowledge about the current infrastructure, and we hold the cards as it relates to incentives. So, partner with us, and we'll make a great team. Go out and go rogue on us? You know, it's like, you're right. We can't do anything about it, but at the same time, it's not doing anyone any favors to be acting, acting in that regard.
And until they recognize that, all we can do is continue to, you know, tell our story.
Yeah, and reference our policy.
And I think that's the importance, having a policy so that we can reference.
Absolutely. No, this is a step in the right direction.
Okay.
I just wouldn't expect any major changes.
I, I'm.
But at least it gives us the opportunity to say, if someone gets ahead of themselves, we say, you know, according to our policy. And then they come backstep.
Absolutely.
I think, you know, like you said, they might go to another state.
Yeah.
Even worse, think they can come here and it really can't actually happen. That's embarrassing.
Well, and that's what we had happen recently, and it was very embarrassing.
Yeah, that's what makes us look bad, and then.
Yeah.
And they leave thinking Weaver County. They don't leave thinking.
State of Utah.
GOEO, because GOEO can, you know, whatever. But they left here thinking, "Oh, Weaver County."
Yeah.
And I've been, the two words to me that were said last year that really upset me was that that Weaver County did a quote-unquote bait and switch.
Yeah.
And I was like, "Oh, let's, let's stop that right now," and explained our role in this process. So, I think this is, you know me.
It's a good first step.
I like, I like to get out in front of these things and have those good collaborative partnerships, and I think this is a good way to start.
It is, and we can reference it when anybody gets ahead of themselves and then have that conversation. Again, if we need to with these groups and say, "According to our policy, we want to be good partners," and just as a reference point rather than a.
No, absolutely.
Rather than a fight.
Yeah, yeah, this is meant to be.
Well, it makes them look stupid too. I mean, let's be honest, you know.
Yeah, but they're second in the stupid line.
Yeah, we're the.
Well, I think the county is at the top of the line. If you, if we're in a situation where an interested, you know, party comes in, they're first thinking the county.
Well, yeah, we're gonna take the heat
Yep.
for something that somebody else said they can get in Weaver County that they can't get.
Right.
So, now we have to go back, and we're the ones doing the backpem.
And I have to come and be bad cop, and I don't always like to be a bad cop. Sometimes, okay, but not all the time.
You know what I think we should probably do? I think this is a good step. We should probably have some personal conversations with Liesel, with GOEO.
Once it's adopted?
Yeah, once it's adopted.
Yeah, and I've had those preliminary conversations with those guys.
So, Chris needs to be part of that.
Yeah.
We need to sit down across the table and say, "Look, here's the policy. Here's the resolution. Here's the reason we did it."
Absolutely.
Make sure everybody understands.
It's not to hurt you, it's to help you.
Absolutely.
We obviously, absolutely want to have them be successful. But they can only be successful if we're given, if they're given correct information.
Yeah.
And they, and they start working together.
And they start, yeah. Anyway, no, it's a step in the right direction.
Anything else, Dad, Commissioner Harvey?
No, no. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll make that correction, and we'll.
He's really quiet.
We'll make that correction, and then get the Sunday Agenda for next week.
Awesome.
I like it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm assuming Chris has looked at this.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Chris, Liesel, Stephanie Pack, and Jared Stewart from GOEO. I'm from EDC Utah. So, they've all, they've all reviewed it, and then I've had one-on-ones with them. But I like the idea of getting them all in the room and saying, "Just pass this."
Let's review it.
And let's review it together.
Yeah, once it's passed, I think that's an opportunity.
So, I did let them weigh in on it and how they wanted to weigh in on it. So, everyone's, everyone was in agreement with the way we laid it out.
It's great. Once it's passed, let's just sit down and review it.
No, it's perfect.
Good.
That we can do.
Since we're kind of on this subject, so HB 37, this kind of fits in with that with Donegan's bill.
It does a little bit, yeah.
Regional. So, you probably ought to put that on your to-do list too.
Okay.
Because that's gonna come up. I know, I know the Governor's Office is pushing that pretty hard. And with these housing shortages, we just need.
Yeah. And this applies to housing as well.
It does.
And we could put a piece of housing in here if you guys want. We could, we could address that as a, or we could do something separate. Let me think about that.
Well, think about that. I, I think we need to.
This one's more.
Yeah, I think this is more industrial.
It might be nice to keep them separate.
But we might, we might want to put something together as it relates to housing. And specifically, as it relates to the use of infrastructure and resources out in that corridor, they are very limited and they're not built out. And that's the biggest problem. What we're seeing, we're seeing from the developer side. This, and I wish Sean was here, because he would speak to this a little bit better than I can. These developers are coming in, they're purchasing these properties that have zero infrastructure, and then expecting, literally expecting, the county, the cities, and the districts to come in and provide that for them. And there needs to be a policy that come, or at least a statement or a resolution of some sort that comes out and says, "Hey, you're welcome to do business in our West Weaver corridor or unincorporated areas, but you need to realize that we're not going to be providing these services." Kind of like what we did with the Infrastructure Finance Districts, where we just said, "You can build it, doesn't mean we have to take it."
Yeah.
And they need to understand that there's a process they need to go to, and they're just not entitled to come out and have utilities just because they bought property and wanted housing development.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll shut up on that. I can speak for that.
No, that's, I think it's good. It would be good to have a policy that, for that too, but.
Okay, I'll look on that. I think separate shot on that.
I, and I would think you base it around HB 37.
I like that idea.
And then take it to wait. So, that needs to be discussed. We need to look at the details. And then sometime over the next couple, three months.
We can do that.
Make a presentation to wake, because, you know, it's a wake-hawk presentation.
Yeah, the cities need to be.
And it's something that Ogden has been pushing for for the last, you know, 10, 15 years.
I like it.
Is how do we get these other cities to come in and participate? Not put, not put all the affordable housing on Ogden City.
On Ogden City, yeah.
And I think that's really what 37, what Donegan was hitting at.
I think so.
So, anyway.
No, I think it was very significant. Let's make a note of that. No, I, I think it was great, so let's make a note of that and start working on that. We'll get that.
Just an idea.
No, it's a great idea. It's relevant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
If, if they're a little early out there, you can send those guys in. Thank you. You guys were quick.
Try to be.
We're better.
You're early.
Yeah.
Hey, I mean, what if we kept it under an hour, Gage?
You get to sound.
Yeah. Well, and since Commissioner Harvey is kind of sick, you know.
Oh.
Is that why we're going quick? Pick on him when he's not here to defend himself.
I don't think we have the NDA on the. Agenda tomorrow, do you? The commission agenda for that, or Dynamics land?
I don't think so. I don't.
I don't. Harv, I don't think so.
Okay.
We'll uh. I'll take.
Motion to sound.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.